November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, planning and zoning board meeting. Call it to order. Lesley, you ready? So, a quick question while they're getting that done. Jim, you're standing, so I can maybe pick on you, but I'm not really picking on you, but we'll see how you handle this. What are the chances, who's going to get offended if I ask our other four board members to come sit up here at the dais now that we've shed ourselves of this plastic?
I think they're set up to be at these tables. Good evening, Jim Hetzel, principal planner and for Ella Parker this evening. I believe they're set up currently to sit at the tables, but we could put that request in so next time it's set up appropriately for everyone to be up there. I don't know any other boards that are functioning that way yet, but we can find out for you.
We like to be a leader. We want to be the first in everything. We want to shout kumbaya and get everybody up here. No, if you could do that for the next meeting, that would really be great. Thank you.
Absolutely, I'll find out for you. Thank you.
Want to be able to kick Mary?
We're forcing the people in the gallery to sit next to each other, so we'll force ourselves to sit next to each other either as well. All right, before we get started, everybody will join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we, before we do an approval of the minutes from last month, I'll introduce who we've got here this evening. My name is Michael Waymoth, I'm the chairman, and to my left is Brad Cohen, and beyond him is Bill Rotella, to my right is Jay Scheckman, and beyond him is John Baranco. Down in front, we have Mary Furtig and Sherry McCartney, and then down here on the left is Patrick McTeague and Steve Gannon. So, with that out of the way, would somebody like to make a motion on the minutes from the October meeting, or if there's discussion, we'll discuss it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Steve and a second from you, Patrick, I'm sorry. A motion from Patrick and a second from Steve. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
For the record, I didn't second it. Someone else seconded it.
No, 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 we got it.
Oh, Sherry is.
I had you initiating it, but then Patrick said he did it, so, anyway, thank you. Okay, now, at this time, anybody that is going to be speaking on any, on behalf of any item on the agenda, please stand and be sworn in at this time.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Sherry is here from our legal department, along with Dwayne Spence. Appreciate it. And it looks like, is that you, Lorraine, over there? That is, hello. To my right, we have Adam. How are you, sir? And is Tyler here? And we, do I see Nancy? I didn't see Nancy. Okay. And our reporting services person is Leslie. So, let's, let's get into the first item of the evening. Well, before we start, is it the board's pleasure to include staff recommendations where applicable on agenda items, instead of reading each one each time?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. I don't know who moved, and I don't know who seconded it.
Jay moved.
Patrick second.
All right. We have a motion seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Case number one, UDP S two-two-zero-two-one. While the applicant comes up, let's start with disclosure. Steve, do you have any disclosures?
Site visit and voicemail from counsel.
Patrick?
Conversation with counsel.
Sherry?
No.
Mary?
I spoke with Mr. Tilbrook. Oh, sorry about that. Now, can you hear me? I visited the site, and I spoke with Mr. Tilbrook. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Visited the site, spoke to Mr. Tilbrook.
Jay?
I missed a call from Mr. Tilbrook.
All right, and Brad?
I received an email, but I wasn't able to respond. I was in trial.
Phil?
Spoke to Mr. Tilbrook and visited the site.
And I did a site visit.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Tilbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start off by introductions. My name is Stephen Tilbrook, I'm an attorney with Akerman Law Firm.
I'm sorry. Is your mic on?
At the base, there's a button.
It's on the bottom, it's on the base, I think.
You're red light, come on.
There we go. Thank you for letting me know. Hi, my name is Steve Tilbrook. I'm an attorney with Akerman Law Firm in Fort Lauderdale, and we're happy to be here tonight presenting for a Stabridge Suites Hotel project just off of State Road eighty-four. I'd like to introduce our team. I have the representatives of developer, PNS Hospitality Corporation here tonight. I also have representatives, Adachi Group Architect, Jason Brandis, and Todd Periden. We have from Kim Lee Horn, I believe Chris, Chris is here, Chris Hagan, and we have from Keith, Mike Phillips. So, that's our excellent team for this project. I'm just going to jump right in and go through a brief PowerPoint presentation. I know you've got a long agenda tonight. I'm going to try and go as quickly as possible. Feel free to jump in if you have any questions. We also have an opportunity for questions at the end. So, the property is located at fifteen fifteen through sixteen eleven, Southwest Twenty-Sixth Street. It is just off of State Road eighty-four, just west of Fifteenth Avenue. It includes seven parcels and one point five six seven acres. It includes the Sky Hotel, which is an existing hotel project, and about four or five residential projects that are legal non-conforming. The zoning, this is a up-close view of the site, it's kind of a hodgepodge at the site, somewhat calling out for redevelopment, a lot of parking in the right-of-way. I'll show you some photos in a second. The land use is commercial, the zoning is B-two, general business. Permitted uses include retail and hotel and mixed use. Minimum setbacks are set forth here, maximum building height is a hundred fifty feet. We're here tonight on two items, parking reduction and a confirmation of adequacy as part of your site plan level three review. The project is, the project is a one hundred twenty-four-room port airport hotel under the Stabridge Suites brand. It includes eighty-five parking spaces, and that triggers a parking reduction requirement. The applicable sections of the code are forty-seven dash two, twenty-point-three for parking reduction, and forty-seven twenty-five-point-two for adequacy. I'm going to show you some of the existing conditions today. This is the Sky Motel, and you can see on Twenty-Sixth Street, we're going to go west. There's a, there is a, an existing gas station just to the right at Fifteenth Avenue, and there's also a gas station on the west, on the south side of Twenty-Sixth Street. This is some of the conditions today, some of the parking in the right-of-way, older residential structures that are not conforming with the B-two zoning. There's some pretty cool trees at the site, and we've done a lot to design around those trees and preserve those trees. We're very proud of the product, but that also triggers some of the parking reduction requirement is preserving trees. This is a sort of oblique aerial view of the, of the property and the project. I'm going to show you a few renderings. It's a eight-story project within the B-two zoning, so it's almost half the building height as allowed by code. It has a port of cachet on the east side, and some on-street parking is incorporated into the project as well. Really upgraded design for a Stabridge Suites. I'm going to thank Adachi Group for their outstanding work on the design and the enhanced materials. We're closely with staff to create a project that we're, the design that we're quite proud of. A nighttime view of some accent lighting on the south side. We don't have any lighting on the, on the, the north side of the building. More of a pedestrian-scale view of the port of cachet and the drop-off. This is the site plan, there was a DRC site plan approval. Comments and responses are in your package, DRC has signed off, complies with land use and zoning, and it also meets adequacy. You can see that there's, we've maxed out the parking on the site for the project, and these limited-service hotels really have to have an efficiency of numbers. A hundred twenty-four rooms is right in the sweet spot, the, kind of the minimum of what they need. We are providing a very efficient parking system onsite, but we also have buffers to the north and to the west, landscape buffers, and tree preservation islands, and in order to protect some of those significant oak trees at the site. We're here tonight on a parking reduction approval. Your section of the code is referenced here, the parking reduction analysis was performed by Kim Lee Horn Associates in accordance with the methodology approved upfront by your city staff and consultants. There is a requirement for a hundred twenty-four-room hotel to have one hundred twenty-four rooms, parking spaces. However, there's mitigating factors that's set forth in the parking reduction report. This is a port airport hotel, it primarily serves airport customers and port customers. There is an onsite shuttle that provides regular trips to the airport, to and from the airport. There is also a third-party service that provides service to the port for, for transportation. In addition, there is, this type of hotel at this location has an enhanced use of ride shares, and we also have six parking spaces on the street that we're park, that we're building in the right-of-way that are not included in the parking count. Based upon that, the parking count provided by Kim Lee Horn included the ULI shared parking analysis for a business hotel, not including really the ride-share analysis. That's incorporated in a five percent reduction that was approved by your staff. Based upon a very conservative adjustment, there's a, a maximum number of rooms at one time of the week at eleven o'clock on the weekend of eighty-four spaces. We have eighty-five spaces onsite and six spaces in the right-of-way, which is ninety-one total spaces. Based upon that, the criteria set forth in your code, our consultant has analyzed that and determined that it meets the criteria, staff concurs, and we're here to answer any questions regarding that. We, we did conduct significant public participation regarding this particular project. We met with the River Oaks neighborhood on a couple occasions. We presented to the neighbor, their neighborhood association, they've provided an email of, of non-opposition, support non-opposition. We've also reached out to other neighborhood associations and met with the directly adjacent neighbors. And we're here to answer any questions, and we thank you for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Brad?
Hi, how are you doing?
I'm great, thanks. How are you?
Good, thanks. How many employees would, does the hotel anticipate having at any one time, and where are the employees parking?
Let me check with my client, I'll get, I'll be right back.
Okay.
You asked one of my questions, so thank you for getting that out of the way.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. I come up with great questions, very poignant. Big meeting. I ask the best question, that's why. The best question requires a lot of think, a lot of thought going with it. I don't think anyone's going to, they're not going to meet on any of your questions like this.
Thank you for your question. The answer to that question is that there's typically more employees during the day, around fifteen to twenty employees during the day. That is, however, when there is the least amount of usage by guests. The guests typically arrive around four o'clock. So, when the, in, in the evenings, there's only around three employees onsite during the peak parking for guests. And Chris Hagan is here, in case there's any questions. I believe that's factored into his analysis, as well as the city's parking counts when it comes to hotels.
So, it's not a secret that I'm not a big fan of parking reductions. It's kind of one of my things. Definitely on residential, because if this was a residential property, I'd, I'd have a very difficult time with this project. The, the closeness to the airport, I'd like to speak with the, yeah. Hi, how are you?
Yes, good evening. Just for the record, my name is Chris Hagan. I'm a transportation engineer with Kim Lee Horn Associates.
Hi, Chris, how are you?
Hi, thanks.
Could you tell me what went into your analysis about the usage of the, of the property for airport, and classically, how airport hotels are used? I think that'll help me.
Correct. Yeah, thank you. We, you know, first of all, we conducted an analysis that started off with, taking account what Steve had just discussed, which is the fact that when the, the peak employee parking demand is there, is typically, that's the highest number of employees parked onsite is in the daytime, because that's when your housekeeping staff, other, you know, maintenance staff, et cetera, are, are more present onsite. They leave, you know, toward the end of the day when more of the guests are arriving to come sleep there. And so, the, the guest peak parking is in the evening, employee peak parking is during the day. So, there's already a little bit, there is some reduction that occurs because of that. On top of that, we did take, take a five percent reduction for, to account for just general ride-share, shuttling, et cetera. We've done some studies in the, in the, in this area for other hotel properties and found that it is actually much higher. We were just trying to maintain a conservative analysis here. One of the, one of the biggest dynamics that is really unique to, to the city of Fort Lauderdale and to this, this part of Fort Lauderdale specifically, is the proximity to the cruise port as well. And what you find is a lot of, a lot of guests who fly in, they may stay a day or two, and then they're getting on a cruise ship, and they're not renting a car. They're, they're here, and again, they're availing themselves of, of ride-share. So, we feel that that assumption's actually very conservative.
So, you touched on, my last question is, the other properties that, I would assume that you've done this for other properties in the area?
Mm-hmm.
Other properties in the area that are hotel near the, the port or near the airport, is it a similar reduction? Because this is, like I said, the only problem that I have, if this was residential, I'd have a big problem.
Understood.
The biggest problem that I have is the percentage of the reduction. I just want to make sure that it's consistent, because it is a hotel, and because it's a different usage than residential, it's a different analysis for me.
Yes.
So, what I'm asking is, the other hotels in this area that you've done analysis for and that you've seen being used?
Yes.
Is this consistent with those?
Yes, it is, and a specific example I'd cite in, is, I believe, I'm trying to remember the hotel flag, but I believe it is a Holiday Inn Express. It is closer to the cruise port, it's on the Seventeenth Street Causeway, but we, a few years ago, they were going through an expansion, and we did the, the parking study there. So, that was a case where there was an existing property where we could actually go out and count the vehicles onsite, and we found that it was, you know, roughly, I think, sixty percent of the, you know, the, the ratio between the parking, occupied parking spaces to rooms was more in the range of sixty to sixty-five percent. Again, just because of that, that dynamic.
Thank, thank you for your answer.
Sherry?
Thank you. A couple of questions. I, actually, Brad asked most of the questions I wanted, I wanted answered, but this is a significant reduction in parking, and I'm wondering if you can tell us what the percentage of crews and airline passengers and how you know that?
So, yeah, that, that's a little difficult to predict. I think it's, it's just knowing that, that with the proximity to, to those attractions, that that's, that that is going to be a heavy, you know, heavy patronage, or at least some sort of the patronage would be that. I'm not sure if they've done any market studies to determine that, but we're basing a lot of that on, on geographic proximity and what you see in terms of demand in the area. I think, aside from that, there, there's something, you know, that we see just in the overall hotel industry, which is because of, of the prevalence of Lyft and Uber and those types of, of services, that there's a greater adoption of, of that use, where people don't want to deal with the hassle of renting a car because of, it's, it's even easier than taxis, you know, used to be, because you can just do it right on your phone. And, and so, we are seeing, seeing that and reducing the overall parking demand for that reason.
I did, I did talk with our client who operates other hotels in the area, and they said between November and June, between forty to fifty percent of the guests are airport guests.
November to June, so that means spring break is not... Never inclusive all the way through? through?
From November to June, so that includes spring break. That's the season, is a higher percentage of them are airport, and that's a higher percentage of occupancy as well during that time.
So, it was pretty much developed for that purpose?
Yep, yes.
Jay?
Yeah, so obviously, we're using, you know, law of large numbers and extrapolating as to how much demand we think there will be. You're suggesting it's, you know, 84 spaces versus 85, which is what you're requesting, versus 124 units. So, but there are 30 employees who are working at the site. Let's say it's 4:00 PM, check-in time, and they're onsite, so then you have 84 minus, what, call it, minus 24, we'll call it 60 spaces left. And let's say you happen to have a day where more than half of the people who are coming to stay at the hotel are using a car. How do you manage that situation in that case?
And I think it's important to note that in terms of the 4:00 PM time, it's, I think that that's when they start to see the heavier influx of the guests arriving. It's not like instantly 100% of the guests overnight are arriving right at 4:00. I think that's, that the reference to that time period was just that that's really when that is starting. So, really, and we have done collected parking counts at a number of different hotel properties, not just in Fort Lauderdale, for various studies, and typically, when we're out there trying to determine what the peak demand is, we're out there at 10:00, 11:00, midnight, or early in the morning, like 5:00 AM, just because that's really when your peak is. I think that, you know, again, you kind of see the dynamic of people starting to arrive at 4:00, and then others, and then the employees starting to leave around that time, but it's not like it's hitting that peak. The one other thing I wanted to point out was, it was referenced in Steve's presentation, was that the hotel is constructing the six on-street parallel parking spaces in front of the hotel property. We're not allowed to count those in terms of, as part of the required parking for the site, but the reality is, there really are no other users in the vicinity where that provide, that is attractive or convenient parking for them. So, essentially, that is, provides at least a little bit of a buffer and a factor of safety, because it's going to be most convenient and most attractive for hotel patrons. So, it provides a little bit of a buffer as well.
So, I appreciate, again, the detail that you put into your analysis, but it is not inconceivable that you will have one, three, four, five, however many days a year where you're not going to have enough parking. So, I go back to my question, what is your plan and how to manage when you have more guests and need for parking and you have spaces available?
I can jump in there. So, some of the things that they are planning to do is use shuttles for their employees as well. Many of their employees do not have cars. They either take public transportation, this is right under public transportation corridor, or they have shuttle abilities. They have other hotels, and they do shuttle employees back and forth to other hotels. So, that's one aspect of it. Continued use of shuttles to the port and airport is really the best way to manage the parking, and they have the ability for their staff to park offsite. They have relationships with the adjacent gas station sites if there is a need for staff parking, to park some of the staff offsite.
Anyone else?
Mike.
Mary?
Steve, as you know, because we were talking, as I was trying to navigate my way out of the area, the access to this area seems somewhat problematic to me. You can only turn right on State Road 84 exiting. There's a, do not enter as you come to the Chevron Station, so you really just have this very little, have you thought about that at all? I mean, the only thing that I'm really concerned about after being, driving the area is the, is getting in and out.
Well, the access is from the east and from the west. You can access the site, but egress is the challenge, and egress is only to the west and onto State Road 84. And it is what it is. There's an existing hotel there and residences there. It doesn't back up. There is not a problem currently. We did the traffic counts, it was below a traffic study requirement, and I don't know if staff wants, Chris, did you look at traffic or just parking?
Mostly parking. We did do the park, the traffic, Steve. So, I can, yeah, as, again, Chris Hagan, as Steve was mentioning, it was below the threshold at which a fully detailed traffic analysis is required by city staff. There's 1,000 trips per day, and this was well under that threshold. So, it didn't get too far in-depth with, you know, in terms of level of service analysis or anything like that. In this case, I think I do defer to what Steve said. It kind of is what it is. DOT limits the access on State Road 84. So, what happens here, and it is DOT's design and actual preference, is to have drivers make a right turn followed by a U-turn further down the road, or just doing a loop further down the road. It's handled that way for safety, and although it, you know, it does provide, you know, require people to, you know, make a more circuitous route, that's, that is really the only option because of, you know, for safety considerations.
Anything else, Mary?
No, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just one quick observation. So, in the analysis, I noticed that they were using the ITE manual, and they did an analysis on that based on the ITE, which is kind of like the nationally recognized book. They got a reduction down to 88. They took a further reduction with the, their proximity to the airport, but that only bottomed four parking spaces. When you look at the ITE analysis, it got them down to 88, and they're providing, I think they were providing, or providing 86 onsite. They're like short two cars. And then with the offsite parking, I'm looking at this thing, I'm like, I think they meet the spirit of the code, and they're saving the trees onsite, and for whatever reason they didn't. Could you take advantage of the motorcycle parking and split a couple of those spots too? Or can you not double dip?
The code doesn't allow for that, but there is likely to be some motorcycle parking. And just to clarify, the ITE manual gets down to 85 spaces, and that doesn't include any shared parking, I'm sorry, ride-share or shuttle parking. There was an additional four spaces, right? Five percent was, around four spaces, that's reduced by the 5% reduction that was approved by staff.
Right.
That gets you down to 84 at the peak hour, and we're providing 85 onsite plus six in the right-of-way. So, we have 91.
Right, okay.
Is that it, John?
Yeah, that's my only observation on that.
I've got a couple of quick questions, or one quick question, I guess. I would agree with your observation that from employees onsite, most of it's during the day, with your housekeeping department being your largest departments and these kind of things, and they're typically gone by the 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock hour with the exception of a couple of people, excuse me. What kind of ancillary services are onsite, you know, in the form of dining options and or meeting for, meeting space for people that are staying at the hotel?
It's limited. So, there's a breakfast room, and there's a business center where you can access computers. There's not really meeting space onsite. There is a pool, there's a swimming pool, and there's that type of facilities that accommodates the visiting guests, but there's not anything to attract other users to this site. There's no bar, there's no restaurant. It's just a breakfast area.
That's what I was curious, because a multi-time-a-day service would generate a lot more employees at the location. So, it's basically a grab-and-go or self-serve with the exception of some back-of-house.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Just a, Steve, in the right-of-way, I mean, there appears to be a fair amount of landscaping in between those spaces. Who's responsible for maintaining that right-of-way?
That is going to be through a license agreement by the applicant. The applicant is required to do a license agreement, maintain the landscaping improvements that they're constructing in the right-of-way.
And the applicant is putting all that landscaping in?
Yes.
Okay.
We, our initial design had 12 spaces in the right-of-way, and based upon negotiations with landscape staff, they wanted the landscaping between each space. That limited it down to six spaces in the right-of-way. So, we would like to have had more parking in the right-of-way, and we designed it to accommodate that, but this is where we ended up based upon landscape requirements.
Okay. Anything else, Bill? Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open it up to the public. If anybody wishes to express comment on it, please step forward. If there's no one to step forward, we will close the public comments section and bring it back to the board for discussion. Seeing nobody approaching, the public discussion's closed. Board, have any questions, comments, discussions, motions?
I'd be happy to make a motion unless somebody has any discussion that they'd like to entertain.
Apparently not. How about it, Jay?
This is Jay Scheckman. I move to approve case number UDP Z22021 with staff conditions of approval as the request meets the guidelines under the ULDR.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patrick. Any more discussion before we go to a vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Spurtik?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Congratulations. Most of them passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have case number UDP Z22019. As the applicant comes forward, let's go with discussions. Steve, I'll start with you again.
Site visit.
Patrick?
Site visit.
Sherry?
None.
Mary?
Site visit.
John?
None.
Jay?
None.
Bill?
Site visit.
And Brad?
None.
And none for me either. Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Good evening. Chair and board members, Sean Jones on behalf of the applicant, SJC Sistrunk LLC. This is a rezoning request in the Progressive Neighborhood, and I have a short presentation that I will take you through. As stated, this is a rezoning from General Industrial to Northwest Regional Activities Center in Michoacan West, which is consistent with the pattern of rezonings that have occurred in the Progressive Neighborhood. This is an aerial view of the overall site, approximately one acre, with the three lots that are being requested for rezoning outlined in black. The zoning is, the rezoning request is consistent with the land use, which is Northwest Rack, and the lots are adjacent to the zoning that's requested, which is Northwest Rack in Michoacan We've done an extensive analysis that was a part of your backup as well as a part of the application that we submitted. The staff has given a positive recommendation on the zoning request. We've also met with the Neighborhood Association and Progressive Villa Civic Association, gave us a letter of support for the zoning request, and this completes our presentation.
That's a quick one.
Very short. Any questions?
You thought that was quick? I thought it was a little long one. Any questions for the applicant before we open it up to the public?
Before we take questions, I want to disclose, but I have no financial interest. I own some warehouses that are probably four blocks, five blocks away from this on Northwest Eighth, but I don't have any financial interest in this project or anything.
That's okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to disclose it just so that, you know.
Got a vacancy? I got somebody looking for space.
I do, actually, yeah. We'll talk later.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Jones? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the board. Any discussion, motions?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Mary, have a.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of case number UDP Z22019 based on the findings of fact, a staff report, the testimony, and that's it. Thanks.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brad. Motion is second. Any further discussion before we vote?
I think it's great to see this industrial corridor be, you know, getting the zoning that it really should have. So, we, as a board, a couple of years ago, sent a communication to the commission saying this whole area should be rezoned. Obviously, that hasn't been done, so we keep having to do this, but I'm glad to see it happening.
Sounds like you're trying to put a bunch of lawyers out of work. Please call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Spurtik?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, next up, case number UDP Z22017. We're going to shake it up a little. Mary, any disclosures? I'm shaking it up.
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm keeping you on your toes. Any disclosures?
That was amazing, you just caught me off-guard there. Yes, I spoke with the applicant's attorney, and I visited the site.
Thank you. Sherry?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Number three.
Spoke with applicant's attorney and did a site visit.
I think we're.
Steve?
Site visit.
Bill?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Brad?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Jay?
I think we're on number three, right? That's the city of Fort Lauderdale is the applicant?
We're on number three.
So, there is no attorney. She's not with Fort Lauderdale.
Are we going to hear all these together? Aren't these all bundled?
Did you just adopt the rezoning for the central area?
No.
No, so that's item three, so you're on that.
Okay.
Wrong item.
They're not all bundled, Sherry?
No.
Okay, all right.
Item, yeah, item three is, Lorraine is handling it.
So, I'm changing and just saying I visited the site.
All right, so let's start all over again.
Wrong item.
Mary?
I visited the site.
Sherry?
None.
Patrick?
Site visit.
Steve?
Site visit.
Bill?
None.
Brad? Jay?
Site visit.
John?
Site visit.
None for me.
Mr. Chair, if you'd like, we have Mark Alvarez from the Coradino Group. He's a consultant for the Central City CRA, and he has a short PowerPoint if you'd like to have an explanation and a presentation on the rezoning.
Okay.
Do, I'm sorry, do you mind introducing yourself for the record?
Yes, Lorraine Tappin, Principal Urban Planner, Urban Design and Planning.
Okay, I'm sorry. Good evening, my name is Mark Alvarez, I'm with the Coradino Group. We are consultants for the City CRA. We're working on the CRA, the CRA, Central City CRA rezoning project, and this is part of that rezoning. And this is actually an older presentation, I'm so sorry, but that's okay, I can talk through it. So, this is part of a three-phased approach. We are handling the rezoning for the entire Central City CRA. The focus of a lot of it will be coming before you in January, where we're doing a rezoning for the, we call it the core area, basically along Sunrise and west of Northwest Fourth. We're dividing it into three phases because this is a different piece of the rezoning that we're doing tonight. We're dividing it into three phases because this is a different piece of the rezoning that we're doing tonight. But it's all part of the same project. And the essential issues of the project were to stimulate redevelopment using the zoning code to provide extra val, additional value on all the parcels of property that we find that we need to rezone. So, um, I apologize. There's another presentation that was a little more recent that shows that map of how it all fits together. So, tonight, though, uh, while, while the larger part of it, we call it the mixed-use district, will come before you in January, that's a text and map amendment. This one is just a map amendment to change, um, to change what we call the Northwest Quadrant. And we're changing it from the current zoning category of RDS fifteen to the zoning district RM fifteen. And the purpose of that is, we're not changing the density in doing that. RD fifteen and RMS fifteen are both at fifteen units per acre. They're controlled by the land use plan, the city's land use plan. What we are trying to do was allow a greater latitude in housing types. So, right now, the RDS category, RDS fifteen, only allows single-family dwellings, detached, single-family dwellings. It doesn't allow any other zoning category, no zero-lot line, no attached, um, duplexes, no townhouses, and certainly no multifamily, all of which could, the capacity for fifteen units an acre could allow all of those in this area. So, um, the area that we're talking about, and again, the, the other presentation had the CRA district, but this is the, the only part of the Central City CRA that is north of Thirteenth Street. It's the only part that we found that there were blighted conditions that we needed to address with the zoning code. And the boundaries are Sixteenth on the north, Thirteenth on the south, Powerline Road on the west or left, and then on the right is Seventh Avenue. The purposes for doing this, again, throughout the whole rezoning project for Central City is to essentially add value. When we add value, we do a number of things. We, we not only increase the real estate value, but by increasing real estate value, we also stimulate redevelopment. Redevelopment helps protect the neighborhoods when there's a blighted condition. We improve the public realm because now redevelopment has to go in under new code with all the requirements of, um, of the approvals for that, which would be a number of site performance standards, including better landscape, better drainage, better access, better parking. And all of these things do help the neighborhood because it's, it's fresh development. It's fresh, new, um, buildings with new landscape, et cetera. And it does help with sea, sea level rise protection because most of what was developed before is not at the sea, at, at a, a level, a base flood elevation plus one level. So, what we are, um, basically doing is changing the menu of uses that are allowed in this area. I'm just looking for, and I apologize, we, this is a different presentation. But, um, the, the focus of this area was Northwest Eighth Avenue between Thirteenth and Sixteenth, which is quite blighted. It has a number of issues going on where there's, uh, there's a lot of trash in the streets. It's not well-kept. The buildings are not well-kept. The parking is all in the front at ninety degrees and there's no curb and gutter. There's very poor improvements for that area. Also, along Powerline Road, we find that it's a very stressed area because having single-family development along such a high-traffic road is also something that stresses. So, the focus was Northwest Eighth as well as Powerline. We went through the public process. We, we went through the process with the CCRAB. We all felt that extending it to Seventh and making that whole area, uh, have the benefits of increasing the value would be something that would work for the whole area. What happens here is the buildings that are along Northwest Eighth in particular, not only don't have an incentive to redevelop, but they have a disincentive to redevelop. Because right now, all of those are grandfathered in, as what they are. They are all multifamily of various sorts. Since right now, the RDS fifteen category, the S is for single-family, if anyone wanted to redevelop there, they would go backwards. They would go back, they would decrease the number of units that are allowed. So, we know, of course, there's no, there's no financial, there's no economic incentive. So, we had to at least get rid of the S. But we also thought that it would be good to improve the menu of options. And with, particularly with assembly, those, those areas could develop into something much nicer. We would not be going beyond the density. We would allow, instead of just single-family dwellings, cluster, zero-lot line, duplex, townhouse, and multifamily, it would also allow some conditional uses that are not currently allowed in RDS, including bed and breakfasts and some mixed use. And social services are allowed anyway. So, what's also important is that the difference between RDS and RM fifteen, as far as the bulk of the buildings, there is no difference. The setbacks are the same. The heights are the same. The, everything is the same except for the minimum lot size. So, an RDS, the minimum lot size is six thousand for a single-family. It says duplex there because the table comes out of the code. And the code combines the dimensional requirements for RDS fifteen and RD fifteen. But basically, it's six thousand square feet per single-family dwelling. When we move over to RM fifteen, we can now actually achieve the density that's allowed of fifteen units an acre because it's five thousand for a single-family or a duplex. Basically, it goes down to twenty-five hundred per unit. So, we can immediately add units or at least, um, we can achieve the same number of units the way the properties are now, but we can add units with assembly without changing the bulk of the buildings, without changing the height, without changing anything that addresses compatibility with the neighborhood. And yet, still get the benefits of redevelopment, better landscaping, better parking, better drainage, et cetera. So, um, this is tracking, again, as phase one of, of a three-phase plan. We're taking the zoning in, in smaller chunks. This one doesn't have a text amendment. It's just a map amendment, so it's a little easier to explain, um, even with some slides missing. We are, we have had a, a CCRAB meeting on the fifth. On the eleventh, there was a public participation meeting of October. Tonight, we're here on November sixteenth. And this, if, if it's approved, um, we'll go forward for a first reading in December to the commission and probably in January for a second reading of this ordinance. There's any questions? I apologize for the slides being a little out of order.
Mike, I have a question for you. So, as you're, as I was driving around today and looking at the neighborhood, um, I know this is a, there are two schools bounding as their good marshal obviously is right in the middle of it and they're very under-enrolled. Are you anticipating that we will see more families with more children move in to the neighborhoods with this, um, change in zoning?
It, it's difficult, um, to anticipate that. It would be, ultimately, the density would not be changing, but we would be, again, we, we, if we pass a rezoning and it's a rezone, we're really, we're waiting for the development community to respond to that. So, it's always difficult to say what the effects would be. But, um, right now, we would go from multifamily to addition, a new multifamily type of dwelling. I think because those multifamilies would probably occur at a closer-to-market rate, we might see more families in that area because of the increased perception of safety and the increased safety, you know, cleaning up the area. I think it's not a, the way it looks right now is not a family appearance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jay?
I was going to say, Mary, I mean, we're, it's single-family zoning now and it's going to allow for two units. So, I mean, absolutely, it's going to increase enrollment.
And, and I was asking that because, um, I'll just take one second here, Mike, to throw this in. The school board is going to be looking at what they like to call right sizing. And I would like to tell you that most of our Fort Lauderdale schools are doing great. But we do have this cluster where we've seen changes in the number of children in the neighborhood. And so, this is an area where actually you have schools ready to take kids if you have, um, the increase and, and, and families moving in. So, I just wanted to add that to your presentation.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant?
I, I had just one quick question.
Go on.
You had mentioned the boundary of Sunrise and having a special district. And when I drove by there, this property did in a butt sunrise. It's like a city block off Sunrise, right? You had mentioned Sunrise Boulevard and creating another district there. And I was curious what you meant by that because I didn't see Sunrise anywhere in any of them.
Yeah. I, I, um, or I could, I have one in my pocket. If you have a moment, I could put the other presentation in and you would see the boundaries a little bit better. But if you want that.
Or you could just point on an aerial and just kind of tell me a little bit about it. Just explain it. I was just, yeah, like there.
So, the area, um, the, the area that we're talking about for the Central City CRA would be approximately bounded by the FEC tracks on the east. It actually includes a little bit of North Flagler. But the FEC tracks on the east, again, approximately Thirteenth going on the north boundary or actually the, the lot line behind Thirteenth Street, uh, going all the way to this area. If I point, it's, it's not going to show. Going all the way to.
We can't see it, but all the way down to Sunrise, basically?
And then going all the way to Sunrise. Correct. So, the area that will come before you in a few months for the mixed-use district would include most everything between, or I should say, east of the, the lot line behind Fourth or possibly Third, but on, on the centerline avenue. That's northeast. And then, um, that area would include Eleventh Street down to Sunrise. And that would all be a mixed-use area where we have a number of, uh, of criteria to stimulate development and also protect the neighborhood and have, have the transitions. And then a third part of that, I said it was three phases, uh, we recognize for that mixed-use district, we can increase the density. So, we know we have to do a land use plan amendment. It's a much longer process. So, it's in three parts.
It makes more sense when you explain it that way as a transition, you know, into the single-family. So, that, that's why I wanted to go back and ask about that. So, thank you.
If I could just ask a question, Mike. When you talked about coming all the way to Sunrise Boulevard, you're only talking about the residential zone parcels? Everything up on commercial, or everything up on Sunrise Boulevard itself is commercially zoned now, right?
Correct. Right. For, for later on, for the mixed-use district, it would every, be everything from Eleventh to Sunrise. So, we're including some of the residential because we need to create a transition along there. Again, we're, we're off-topic, but just to explain it to you, um, the Sunrise section has, the, the zoning line is somewhat north of Sunrise. It's very, very difficult, small depth to develop in. So, we know we have to create a zoning district that allows the transition and allows assembly and so forth. So, it would be sunrise to Eleventh and then the mixed-use district, which has clearly been the biggest focus, is basically fourth, northeast Fourth Avenue going east to the FEC. We're really looking for a much more vibrant, um, mixed-use district.
Excuse me, Chair. This is, uh, Jim Metzger. I just want to point out, if you want the boundaries of the CRA, it is in the exhibit three. In your backup on page seven, shows the boundaries of the Central City CRA. Just wanted to point that out for you.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Patrick?
Just in looking at it, I was curious, uh, maybe why you didn't carry it up to Northwest Eighteenth Street, the rezoning requesters, you know, just kind of finish that.
Yeah. That, that's actually where the, um, showing the CRA boundary would be.
It was cut off right there.
The CRA cuts off at Sixteenth.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no other questions, we'll open it up to the public. If you have, if you'd like to comment on it, please come forward, state your name. Feel free to line up. I'm going to give each one of you three minutes to speak on the issue. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ray Thrower, I've lived in the, um, Ray Thrower, yes. I've lived in the neighborhood since two thousand and seven. I'm here as, uh, representing, uh, the community and also I'm the chair of the Central City CRA. We have been working on this for ten-plus years. These properties, primarily they're duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes. They could use some upgrading and there's just really been no incentive for the owners to upgrade them if the only thing they can put back is a single-family home. So, we feel like this is a real positive and something we've been working. We think that like twenty-five years ago, that the neighborhood thought it would be a good thing to put the S there, the single-family. You know, they thought that was the right thing to do. But twenty-five years later, it just hasn't. It hasn't helped this, this area of our neighborhood. So, we think this is a positive. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Edward Catalano. I live at twelve forty-five Northwest Second Avenue. That's the corner of Northwest Second and Thirteenth Street. I want to make it very clear to you all that what you're voting on is that one Northwest quadrant. Nothing about Sunrise, nothing about anybody else, but that one quadrant that we would like to change. It has been a blighted area since I moved here in two thousand and fifteen. It is somewhat improving, but the only way to get it to improve better is to make this zoning change. There needs to be money put into that area by investors who want to make and fix up the houses just like they've done in the rest of South Middle River. South Middle River, when I first moved here, was not what it is today. It has greatly improved and we want to make it better. I am also the secretary of the South Middle River Civic Association, as well as being on the CRA board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dwight Stewart. I actually own a property off of Ninth Avenue, right on the main street of where this, uh, this development is, is happening. So, my only question is if, if we increase from a single-family to a multifamily, how would that not increase the density of the community? I am in support of improvements. I'm just wondering how that wouldn't impact the, the density of the community?
It will.
Okay. Because I think in the presentation, they said it wouldn't impact.
There's going to be more units.
Right. Okay.
Maybe that's a question for the applicant. So, his question is how it's going to increase, but the, obviously, the density is going to increase because the zoning is going to change, right? Well, if you get what you want, the zoning would change. And then there would be zero-lot line housing, multifamily housing. So, obviously, the density is, I think the answer is the density is going to change, but I don't know if there's further information that you want other than this, the density is going to change, right? Some people don't know what zero-lot line housing is. Maybe that's probably a good idea to discuss as well.
Okay. So, actually, the density, number of units per acre, is controlled by the city's comprehensive plan and the zoning doesn't control it. The zoning districts more or less subscribe to that limit. In the case of the way it exists now, it's called RDS fifteen. The fifteen means fifteen units an acre. The RM fifteen means fifteen units per acre. And we can't exceed fifteen units an acre because the land use plan, the, the comprehensive plan, has fifteen units an acre for that whole district, for the whole area. We can't, we can't bump above that. What the RDS did, and I, I understand from the history of it, many years ago, there was a desire to, um, to, to improve that neighborhood and the thought then was to go to strictly single-family. The way the zoning code is right now, it's almost impossible, based on the, the lot, minimum lot size, to ever get to fifteen units an acre in the RDS fifteen. We're basically allowing it to go to its fifteen units an acre by making this change. So, it's, the answer is we're not technically increasing the density, but we're allowing that area to reach its maximum density. So, on the ground, as you look at it, you will see greater density.
Right. But that's not, that's not really accurate. So, it, it is accurate, but you can't, you, that's kind of a half-truth. And not to say that it's, you're misleading anybody, but what you're proposing is multifamily on those lot, on those lots and zero-lot lines, meaning you can put houses right next to each other or very close to each other or right up against each other. So, what you're saying is, the way that it is now, it's fifteen per acre. But the problem is, is that the fifteen per acre can't ever be accomplished because of setbacks, because of different things that the city requires, so that there's some green space, correct?
Correct. So, the speaker is correct in that his eye will see a higher density, but I, you know, as, as testimony, I have to say that we're not increasing.
And I'm not, I'm just making sure that he understands and everybody understands what it, what it means in terms of zero-lot lines. And, and when he says, when the question was, is dense, you know, how is it going to affect density? Density is going to increase because we are now putting maybe five units onto something that could only have two units on because of, you, the numbers are going to increase. That's the answer.
Correct.
Okay. Got me? I got you. Okay. Thank you.
Can I just piggyback on that, Mr. Chair?
Sorry?
Can I just piggyback on this thing?
Anytime.
So, that existing, the way things exist in the neighborhood now, are there quadplex?
So that existing, the way things exist in the neighborhood now, are there quadplexes, triplexes, and duplexes there now?
There are, I'm sorry, there are, yes, they're the old style.
And under the RDS, which is the current zoning, would those be allowed?
No.
They're not. So the density is in fact high now, as it exists, which is kind of interesting, too.
Right.
So I just want to point that out. So it may still be about the same density, but it may create the potential to do better quality in the same densities that exist. Because right now, it's existing non-conforming quads, so.
So can I just follow up on something Brad said, though? Because I think one point he brought up is how this could impact green space if you have, if you have a zero lot line. So, just so that's part of the conversation.
Okay. We'll hear from the next.
And I think he did mention something about height, and the height would not change. It will still be 35 feet.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. Please give us your name.
Reese Wernin.
How's it going? My name is David Taxman. I own a property at 1228, 1230 Northwest 7th Terrace in this area. Recently purchased there. Good location, you know, close to downtown, close to the beach, next elementary school, close to the highway. Some of the properties there are a little beaten up, need some upgrades, definitely. I think that this type of rezoning could provide that catalyst to provide a facelift to a great area, great location, make it much more desirable. And also, like we were talking about, increase density and provide more, more housing for the neighborhood. We all know that affordable housing and greater housing for Fort Lauderdale is probably the number one issue, if not traffic, on everyone's mind and agenda, so this could help solve that. But also just provide a facelift and provide a nicer neighborhood over time. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but it'll happen. So, because like we were talking about earlier, with the current zoning, there's no incentive to improve. I mean, maybe make some nice upgrades, paint, put in a nice fence, which I've done, you know, rehab the units, but nothing greater than that as with the current zoning. So it's stifling right now, so. But I appreciate the Planning and Zoning Board and the city for bringing the attention to this neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Give us your name.
My name is Charles Leitner. I live at 1445 Northwest 7th Avenue. I bought that property, which is on the corner of 7th and 15th, so I'm very close to the neighborhood that everybody's questioning, or that particular street, which is 8th. I echo everybody's sentiments as far as improvement in that area. Me particularly, I've invested about $80,000 in rehabbing this home, with another $40,000 in future projects. So I'm very invested in the neighborhood, as well as my home, so I certainly have concerns. As much as I want to see that area be cleaned up because it is a mess. There's trash on the streets, it blows through the neighborhood, it really is an eyesore. My concern is for increased density, and the concern's being mostly, it's a very saturated area currently right now. We're divided by many, many one ways that are already seeing very high traffic, speeding. There's really no control of that traffic there, or the quality of people that are in those residences. So I'm not very confident, yes, we can build these very beautiful duplexes, but my concern is, under the same ownership and the way the city has allowed these to basically fall apart, that that's not guaranteed to happen in another 5, 10, 15 years. So I'm looking at this from a long-term prospect. I don't want tons more traffic in the neighborhood. You know, this is corny, but we have the peacocks there. We're very proud of those peacocks, and I want to make sure that they stay safe as well as my property. So as much as I want this to be cleaned up, I do have some concerns as far as traffic and the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Neewasi Nsoblin. I live in that area. I live across on 16th. My address is 1610 Northwest 11 Terrace. And yes, I believe in always improvement, but my concern is that what happens to the people that live there right now? I mean, yes, we want to see, everyone wants to live in a better place. I do. You know, we strive for that. But my thing is that every time that we hear someone come in our neighborhood and they have these great ideas, how many of them live there? They talk about, yeah, we have areas, I mean, we have issues in the areas where there are safety issues. I mean, the buildings are bad and the thing, but the thing is, too, is there, when they build all these new units, what's going to happen to the people? Are they going to be able to buy there? That's the biggest thing. COVID hit, they were struggling. Now they still struggling. So where are they going to go? Because they said that, I remember that my sister used to live at just, just, just south, just south of Broward, and they told them that they were going to improve the building too. And what they did was, they could no longer live there. As they went through, they changed everything. They couldn't even stay there anymore because they couldn't afford it. So, yeah, rezoning is always good, but is it rezoning for the benefit of the people who are living there right now? And the traffic is terrible in the morning. I go, I take my kids to school, it used to take me 15 minutes. It takes me 40 minutes to get around there. I mean, it's just too much. It's just too much. Everybody wants to, it's like they, it's like we're being displaced too out of our area. How many of y'all live there? I mean, it's the difference of visiting and living there. That's what I'm saying. It's just that, it sounds good, but I know that those people will not be able to stay there. So who is it for? Is it for the people there, or is it for the new people to come in?
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hi. My name is Dean Richards. I own a property a little bit north of there, and I own another property in Fort Lauderdale as well. I like rezoning, and I've owned my property since I was 17 years old. I'm 48 now. And like she, I'll piggyback a little bit on what she says. We all think that rezoning is nice and stuff, but when I heard what he was saying, it was a lot confusing when he said that it's high density, well, density and all that. When you say density and zero lot, I think of no lot space. I think of five or six stories building, or a thing like that. It's just very confusing. You know, I just would rather a presentation that was much more well-updated and put together presented so that we know exactly where it's going. Because a little bit, I heard he said something about, to the FCC line, I guess to the train line or something. I heard that, and then I heard something else, and it's just confusing. I would wonder if he'd come up here and speak again and spell it all out, but I'm not so sure that it's the right thing for the community. I'm just giving you my opinion. I just would like for him to come up and clarify again, what is the exact zone? Because he said it was, there's two schools there. There's Thurgood Marshall, which I know of. There's Northwest, which is over there by the subway, and there's a car lot there. And those schools have low enrollment because the school board changed it to only have 4th and 5th grade. That's the reason why the school has low enrollment, not because of the community. Same thing with Lauderdale Manners. They have a school, elementary school over there as well, which they went ahead and closed that down and made that into an administrative building. So they did all these upgrades to that building and then turned it into an office. So now, when I look at my tax bill, I'm being charged for that, but now that's become an office, not a school where I can send my children to. Do I have to send my children to Nova, which is a good school, Oakland Park? But I can't send the children to schools in my own community? Come on, now. I don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Bring him back to the board, Jay.
Yeah, I'd like to just introduce some discussion on this matter. So I understand that the intent, or the desire of the CRA is to increase, you know, to revitalize this area, and that good urban planning practices would also create a buffer or transition zone between a major thoroughfare such as Powerline and a residential community. So I appreciate all of that intention and leading for this to come up to us today. But, you know, one of the things that we're charged to do here in our review of the rezoning is to determine whether or not the proposed rezoning is, complies with the character of the neighborhood. In my opinion, I do not think that RM 15 is an appropriate zoning designation that is compatible with, with this neighborhood when it encroaches as far east as 7th Avenue as proposed here. I think that an RM 15 would be appropriate for the three blocks along Powerline, and the rest of this should be addressed with RD 15. So just go back to what the original zoning was. Take out the S, and what you're left with is developers there able to build, you know, new projects, maintain the density, but have front-facing, community-oriented duplex developments like we see in Victoria Park, and Tarpon River, and Croissant Park. You know, we're not putting RM 15 in those neighborhoods for specific reasons, because when you start doing that, you start siphoning off different pieces of the neighborhood and you take away the character. So I would be in support of rezoning the three blocks along Powerline to RM 15, but the remaining six blocks to RD 15. I don't think that RM 15 is, throughout, is compatible with the neighborhood.
Jerry?
Yeah, and I have an issue, and I just want to ask you. I have an issue with zero lot line. We've had numerous projects come before us this past year where we did this, and then we had them come forward, and there was a lot of concern from neighbors about being on top of each other. They've been all over the city, and they really, truly impact green space, which I think is increasingly important. So there has to be a compromise where you can, I mean, why are you doing zero lot line?
If we take a look at the available uses under the RM 15, zero lot line is one of the many uses. And whichever development comes in, whether it's, you know, like for example, we have specific architectural criteria, landscape requirements, for each of the types of uses here. So any new development would have to meet those criteria. It's not a particular, we're not particularly encouraging any one of these, but opening up the possibilities so that way hopefully a property owner is incentivized to redevelop their property.
So as I drove through there today, you know, there are a lot, there's a lot of old growth trees. And, and as I'm listening to the presentation, I know that you're not saying to everybody, oh, let's just have a zero lot line setback, but I'm trying to imagine that neighborhood if everybody made that selection, and what it would look like compared to what it looks like today. I think that there's a lot of good suggestions that you've made with this area, but I have a real concern with incorporating that. And is there a way to do this without having that?
RD 15 doesn't allow for zero lot lines if we recommend that.
You went to that.
Instead of RM 15.
Yeah. I just think environmentally, it's not a very good solution either, so.
Anybody else wish to comment?
So how would, how would RD 15, were there more uses? In other words, would the single-family dwellings need less lot line, less square-footage lots? Could there be more of them on the same, same area?
It's all 15 units per acre, if it's RM or RD. But with RD, the only difference, as the gentleman alluded to, is the required lot size to be able to do RD 15 is 6,000 feet versus 5,000 feet for RM. I clicked around on the BCPA and found none of the sites in that area to be less than 6,500, more or less, square feet. So I don't think that discrepancy poses any issue. So I believe that by doing RD 15, you're not adversely impacting the neighborhood because you'll have new development, but it will be like front-facing, neighborhood-waving type of development, not looking at a wall of a cluster that's eaten, you know, a quarter of your neighborhood.
I just want to add one thing. If a developer came in here and he bought all these homes in this area, and a developer came in here and was asking us to rezone this, I don't know if we would say, this isn't spot rezoning, this isn't, I mean, there would be so many more questions. That's, that's the issue that I have, is that because CRA comes in here and asks for the rezoning, it's like, we don't ask those same questions that we would ask of a builder that would have, if a builder owned this whole square. And I, I like to listen to everyone in the neighborhood, and I've heard everyone in the neighborhood. I understand, I understand blighted areas. I've been investor, an investor in blighted areas. I've lived in blighted areas. You know, I was in Victoria Park when there was biker gangs in Victoria Park in the 90s. It was not the Victoria Park of today. So I understand the concern where individuals want to see change because they want, obviously, their home values to go up. They don't want a blighted area to, you know, people throw trash around and things of that nature. But I don't know if the suggestion tonight is the right long-term solution. I like what Jay has said and what Jay has offered because I think it's a compromise, and I think that it gets, it gets you where you want to go without losing a lot of green space and looking at a wall of zero lot line homes. Because, like I said, and I've heard everybody tonight, but I think sometimes when we get what we wish for, it doesn't turn out to be exactly what we wish for. That's why I think what Jay is suggesting may get you to ultimately where you want to go without the same, it will be the effect without the bad portions of it, is my opinion. But that's just for suggestion.
And Jay, are you suggesting to save green space, that we make the whole section, just drop the S, and go back to what it was originally, when they were able to develop it with multifamily, but they?
Yeah, so there's nine blocks.
Yeah.
And my suggestion would be for the three blocks along Powerline to be changed as requested to RM 15. That will allow for, you know, them to be a little bit more creative in build somewhat of a multifamily project that appear from Powerline to be, you know, walk up residential units, but will allow for residents to access, you know, off of Powerline, and not necessarily have, you know, their front driveway on Powerline Road. And then for the remaining six blocks, that those would be RD 15, and allow for people to build duplexes or single-family homes. And they would most likely be, you know, nice homes, 2,300 square feet, two at most per lot. The homes would be facing the front of the street, the front doors would be facing the front of the street. You'd be meeting your neighbors and speaking to them instead of looking at, you know, walls.
Okay. I, I still have that green space thing for those three blocks, but can I just ask another question here, a totally different topic? I know you had a community presentation, I think many of us were noticed on it, but I see several people from the community here, so I'm kind of wondering what presentations were given to homeowners groups as opposed to the one you had. I think people are more likely to go to a meeting in their neighborhood than they are to go to a meeting in City Hall, and if those meetings didn't occur, that to me is a problem.
Hi, my name is C. Gentleman Jabar. I'm the CRA Planner for Central City. I just want to say that this project started a really long time ago, in 2018. So in the first two years of the project, we did So in the first two years of the project, we did a number of workshops that a lot of people were excited about. They came out, they did, you know, little fun coloring, what are our preferences? What area needs focus in this northwest quadrant section was a really big issue for a lot of people. More just like what can we do to change the area? And a couple of years ago, the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, after we had shown the proposal was dropping the S. But in the beginning of this project, if we can pull up, can, I don't know how to pull up that map. The northwest quadrant map, I just want to point to. Okay, all right. All right, I'm going to do my best because I understand you were mentioning you don't feel that RM fifteen for this entire area might be a wise proposal. Instead, you're recommending RD fifteen. And in my understanding, you only would like to see RM fifteen to the, what is that, the left side?
To the left side on the screen.
The left side facing ninth and then the rest, just drop the S, that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
So we eventually arrived at that point in time and that was about six months ago, maybe almost a year. I will tell you that a lot of people were upset that they went through this whole process. And instead of having, because we used to have a transitional edge to the left closer to sunrise. Because just by my summarization is it's facing a corridor, it makes sense to have something more and then preserve the character in that area. But a lot of the comments that we received, at least at the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board and people emailing and some of the, I sent out a lot of emails on these projects as well. They say we don't go far enough and it seems like lazy work. At one time staff talked about whether or not there's, the market is there for this area to change entirely and we would have to consider additional studies to be done. That TE section on the left side, we eventually changed it to just, let's drop the S and make it RD fifteen for this entire area. Not entire area, half of the area, so at least two blocks in. And still it wasn't enough. And so we had some discussions with staff, with the planning department. We came up with RM fifteen because it provides more opportunity and might incentivize the property owners to improve the properties there. Because if you're going to change it, why just go halfway into it? And the public was more receptive to that, I feel, and we've gotten this far.
So the, what we're all trying to get at here is being able for there to be more allowable density to get built, to make it economically viable for some of these property owners to rebuild on their site. When you have R at DS fifteen, all they're able to build is a single-family home. If you change it back to what it was, RD fifteen, now they can build two homes on, on 6,000 square feet of land. If you make it RM fifteen, they can build two homes on 6,000 square feet of land. So it doesn't change the amount of units that you're going to be able to revitalize and build with, but it does it in a way that is congruent with the character of the neighborhood. Because when you have RM fifteen, you're going to be introducing walls and siphoning off parts of a neighborhood which today are walkable and include neighbors who wave to each other and walk their dogs and know each other. When you start creating little clusters and enclaves and you wall off part of a community, you're, you're taking a part of the community away. There, it's, I believe that's warranted along a major thoroughfare like Powerline. But then as you get further away from Powerline, I believe that fully implementing RM fifteen will erode the sanctity of the neighborhood.
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to share some of the comments that at least I've heard throughout the months.
So when you say you had meetings with the community, did you have those meetings in the context of the Central City CRA? Or did you have those meetings going neighborhood association to neighborhood association with this proposed change?
No, we've never presented at a neighborhood association. We've always invited everyone to attend the crab meeting. For these public participation meetings, we're trying to accommodate a 6:00 PM time so everyone that's working can come.
Yeah.
We've had held several special meetings at night for the purpose of having as many people to attend because the project has involved so much. And some people have just lost interest in trying to keep in touch with what's going on.
Well, I, I think you've done a great job. We're coming off of a pandemic where people didn't necessarily go out to meetings though. And I'm just concerned with the neighborhood people that we saw tonight, that there could have been more conversations with people in individual neighborhoods before making a change to their neighborhood.
No, I understand. And we sent out, we obviously sent out a letter to everyone in that neighborhood at this point in time and also 300 feet from that area. And I understand that's a requirement, but also for the second phase, we're trying to do that a little bit ahead of time. Because we do get calls and a lot of people don't understand what exactly rezoning is. So it's the kind of questions that really, you know, changing the zoning is not going to impact you immediately. You don't have to move out of your house. It's, it's those kind of concerns. So we're going to do our best to do additional outreach so we don't run into these issues. But I try to advise or tell people that we've been having this project for such a long time. And we used to send out so many mailers initially, but since there's so many gaps we've had for, from the pandemic, it's not the same level of engagement that we're experiencing.
Thank you.
I wanted, I wanted to, if I could, add to the public participation process. As a matter of fact, when I organized with CJ to have the meeting to notify the residents within 300 feet that this was coming up, we determined to use the city commission conference room. And CJ insisted to me, she said, I don't think that's going to be big enough because when we started this process, we, they had a couple hundred people. But actually, we had about 15 folks there, some living in the area and some from the surrounding area. So we did have good attendance for rezoning of this type. Also, I attended the South Middle River Neighborhood Association meeting by Zoom last night. I went over some of the slides and the rezoning. Mark has attended also the South Middle River Neighborhood Association meetings, trying to do what we can to get the word out. So I think the outreach has been significant on this.
Did you say in the, in the meeting in October, how many people did you have?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
John?
One quick question for Lorraine. Lorraine, there was some interest from some of the board members to look at going back to the RD fifteen. Could you tell me what uses specifically are permitted in the RD fifteen? Is that something you could pull up and show us?
Mark, I think you had it on your, Mark has pulled it up on his iPad, so.
And I guess what I'm really getting at are zero lot line developments permitted in RD fifteen.
There are. RD fifteen permitted uses are single-family, single-family dwellings attached, single-family duplex attached. You know, there's two attached and then also zero lot line, single families. With a note to C-section forty-seven, eighteen, thirty-eight for more requirements on that.
So I, I don't know that RD fifteen is going to solve our concern with the zero lot line either. And zero lot lines aren't the easiest things to design. It's, when you look at that section of the code, you remember cluster dwellings coming in front of us? How difficult they are to design? Nobody likes them. Think the townhouse option kind of creates a little more flexibility and interest because they are restrictive, you know, you can't have garages facing right of ways. I mean, they do nice things. So if we're trying to avoid zero lot lines, I think they may have to create a PUD over there. The CRA would have to pursue something like that and try to do something unique to the area. But if we're looking for something right out of the book, I don't know that there's a perfect fit, right? So, um, and like we've heard tonight, they're trying to change things for the better. And I think the CRA has always done a pretty good job about redeveloping areas and having incentives for affordable housing and trying to create jobs for folks in the neighborhood. I mean, I, I've been involved in a few projects where the CRA would provide property or funding one way or another, but they really encourage involvement in the neighborhood. So of all the applicants we would have before us, I think these guys, that's their main purpose in life, I think, is affordable housing and, and bringing money into these neighborhoods. So when folks talk about gentrification, I think the CRA does it the right way. It's renewing, revitalizing and keeping the character of not only the neighborhood, but the people. And, and they've done a pretty good job. If you look at what they've done around Sistrunk Corridor, just the businesses are thriving and the neighborhood is still, you know, historically what it is, which is historically black neighborhood. It's a great community. And I don't know, that's just my two cents because I've heard a lot of testimony from everybody tonight. I just want to be sure we make the right decision.
This is a different CRA, but I think they've done a great job. I, no one's debating that they've spent a lot of time on this. It's just driving through these neighborhoods and seeing what they are. And do, do we need to revitalize and offer other options? Yes. But do we want to end up with a solid wall that takes away from the character of another? And I don't know what the answer is, John. I really don't. I'm not, I'm definitely not as smart as the rest of you here, so anyways.
Jay?
I, I commend the CRA and their effort. I think that what I've proposed accomplishes exactly what they are looking for. They're looking for an ability to incentivize new development. We're talking about a third of it giving exactly what was requested and then the other two-thirds having a mechanism in place for that same revitalization potential and being able to do two units per acre. The only difference in the two proposals is that the first one leads to the risk that a number of cluster developments get built and are siloed from the rest of the neighborhood. Whereas the second approach preserves the integrity and character of the neighborhood, which is what we're tasked here as a planning and zoning board to determine tonight. So with that being said, I'm going to make a motion that.
Let me, let me make sure there's no more comment.
Sure.
Does anybody else wish to comment on this before Jay makes a motion?
This is Jay Scheckman. I am making a motion on case number UDP Z two-two zero one seven. I move that we approve the request with the staff conditions included with the modification that on the legal description of the properties, plat book two, page eighteen, the blocks twenty-five, seventy-one and seventy-two would be RM fifteen and blocks twenty-six, seventy, seventy-three, twenty-seven, sixty-nine and seventy-four would be RD fifteen.
Before we seek a second on that, I have a feeling Mr. Spencer is going to make a comment.
Yes, sir. In accordance with the ULDR, when the planning and zoning board does have the opportunity to suggest a more restrictive zoning, however, the applicant needs to consent. If the applicant does not consent to the more restrictive zoning, then the planning and zoning board would have to deny the rezoning request.
Is it possible to defer this then to let them decide and come back to us?
We've got an item for us to vote on. If we, if we deny what they're asking for, they can go back and revisit and come back with something else. But for us up here unilaterally, start picking and choosing what's going to be where. I think we, they have to give us a presentation. I, I think this is a little bit different than allowing somebody to say, you know, will you get with the applicant and work out that 15-foot easement and where you put it?
They're also getting almost everything that they said that they want, so I don't, I don't see why they should take a.
Okay, so did you get a second?
No, he has not.
I'm happy to second.
I don't think they can.
Exactly.
So it would be up to the applicant to accept what he's suggesting or, or not accept it. And then if they don't accept it, then we'd have to vote on what it is.
The applicant is the city.
I understand that. I was just looking for a second of the motion before we spend any more.
Oh, I don't think we can second anything because I think the applicant first has to.
Accept the motion.
Right.
Who, who?
That's the city.
Why, I, there's a whole bunch of people in here from the city.
Mr. Chair?
Is it Lorraine's position to answer that, to accept it or deny it?
So Lorraine is technically the case planner that is reviewing the application. So you're representing the city in its regulatory capacity. Who's representing the applicant as far as submitting the application on that end? Would be, it would be the appropriate person to address whether or not to accept or not.
So is that the Corredino Group?
Who, who is that?
If we don't accept the changes, does that mean we go back and do another?
So what, what can happen at this point in time is if you don't accept the changes, the board may consider approval of the existing changes or a denial. If they deny it, you will have to appeal to the city commission. If they approve it, then it moves forward for consideration with a recommendation of approval to the city commission.
I don't know if that's my call. I mean, this is a public project. I would have to deny it and then try to appeal it.
Okay, so what I'm interpreting from the CRA planner is that she doesn't have the authorization to accept, which is, which is the same as not accepting the condition.
Agreed.
Can we move to defer the item and tell, and give them more time to discuss it without having to, you know, deny them completely and then they have to go to the city commission?
Can I ask for a deferral?
That's what I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I'll second that, Patrick.
We've got a motion.
Yeah, we have to.
If, if the motion dies because it doesn't get a second, well, actually, no, they already said.
Oh, instead.
I take it, yeah, instead, instead. You're right. I'm sorry.
So the motion now would be to approve a deferral to, right.
Okay, so Patrick, you're, you're, you're suggesting you're, you're making a motion to defer it to.
Yes, I, I asked the board if they're willing to extend.
How much, how much time does the CRA need to consider this? I don't want to just defer it. We need to defer it to a date certain or a meeting certain.
Yep.
While you're considering how long you want to defer it, I may suggest that if you're changing things around, as I suspect you might be.
I don't know if they're listening.
So, so I, I think a deferral to the next meeting might be prudent because what you're looking at is getting consent from, are you going back out for public output or are you just getting consent from like the city manager's office or?
Well, there was some discussion about community input. You may, may want to take advantage of this pause and do the same thing, you know, take 60 to 90 days. Talk to whomever you need to talk to, but include the public back into it. We're post-COVID. People are meeting. And get, get buy-in.
Yep, maybe go January or February.
Get everybody out here to say, we like that. So you want to defer it to February or March? Does it matter to, to you guys, Dwayne?
How about 60 days?
So.
I would say don't vote on it. Let me take it back. We'll come and.
So you want, you want to hear it in January?
Why don't we say February, yeah, fifteenth?
What's that?
I didn't know February fifteenth works because so many people travel in holidays in January and December.
So this project is broken up into three phases. We're already planning second phase to come on February fifteenth. So it's really hard for me to push this back.
They want to hear it on January eighteenth, 2023? Patrick, why don't you make your motion, defer it till January twenty, eighteenth, 2023?
Okay, I make a motion that we move to defer item number, case number UDP Z twenty-two zero one seven to the date certain of January eighteenth, 2023.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Mary. Any further discussion before we?
Yes, discussion.
Yes, discussion.
John, what say you?
So I'm curious, why are we hearing this in phases? You know, to Brad's point originally, they were talking about spot zoning. To me, the bigger the piece of cake, the less we talk about this as if it were a spot zone. So I'm not sure why the applicant wouldn't come in here with everything, so we could look at everything and be sure that everything is compatible, and we see a growth pattern that makes sense. It seems kind of counterintuitive to come in here and put a postage stamp in the middle of this whole area and say, hey, this is going to be different, and eventually this is going to be different when everything is kind of growing from this edge. It just seems like a better picture if we see it that way.
CJ, again, so I completely understand where you're coming from. So this project has stalled so long. A lot of comments we get is that we're not doing our jobs as well as we should, and the Northwest Quadrant, because the proposal is RM15, my understanding is an easier change than our mixed-use district, which is around the Sunrise area and Northeast Fourth. So we brought this forward so we can show some, you know, progress on the project while we're working on the other one.
If I may, because I was also involved with the project. So they've started this, a comprehensive look at the Central City Community Redevelopment area, and so there are different processes with regards to the different rezonings and changes that are being proposed, which is the reason why it was broken up, because you're going to have to view these as separate items when they come before the board. I do understand what the board member is saying, and I think the same level of... We have an unwanted visitor over here. The same level of outreach that you've done to the community, which has a comprehensive view, may be something that the Planning and Zoning Board may want to consider to member Baranca's point, but as far as the voting on each of the items, you have to take them separately based on the nature of the items.
The irony of this, if you'll recall, is that we asked for a presentation on the Central City CRA, and we were denied, which would have given us the very overview that John's suggesting, which is it all comes at one time and we see the plan. So I'm supporting the motion to defer, but I'm also thinking, what if we just took one evening and did all of this? We can see how time-consuming it is, and neighbors want to speak, and is that a possibility? Or do we need to vote on the motion to defer?
It's obviously a possibility, but we've got a motion and a second in front of us, so we have to rule on that first.
I'm ready.
Let's call the roll. Any other comments before we call the roll? Leslie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranca?
Yes.
Ms. Spartik?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotello?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes. So if you're bringing Phase Two before us in February, when will you be bringing Phase Three? Sounds like there's three. Is that correct? There's three phases?
Yes, there's three phases, and the third phase is the land use plan amendment, but that's entirely dependent on this project completing before we take that on, because it requires going out for solicitation to hire a firm to come in to help us with that portion. So, yes.
When you say this project, you talking about the specific item we're talking about tonight, or this item and the next item?
The Central City rezoning project, the entire area, so...
So the January meeting and the February meeting, and then once you've got your decisions on that, then you'll go to the Phase Three?
Correct. Once we've been to this board and City Commission first and second reading, then we'll be ready to start the last phase of the project.
Okay, it's been deferred till January 18th, 2023. Moving on to the next case, case number UDP L22004. Nectaria, I'm sorry, when you came up before, I thought I was on these and we were lumping together. Can we hear the two cases together, but vote them separately? Shari?
I'll defer... This is Jim Hertz. I'll defer to this Assistant City Attorney, but I believe you can hear them together. You have to vote separately on each item.
I'm sorry, Jim. I didn't hear the answer.
Duane will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you can hear both items together, but you have to act on each item separately.
That's what I'm asking.
We're fine with that. They're somewhat intertwined, so...
Is the city okay with that?
Well, in the case of the text amendment, if council is okay with explaining them together, that's fine, but they are really distinct items.
If you want us to hear them separately... Mr. Spence, if you want us to hear them separately, I'm fine with that.
That would be my preference.
Let's hear them separately. I'm just trying to keep the night moving, so...
Can we hear the map amendment first, so I can explain the site and what is, you know, bringing us here? It's item five.
You want to reverse the order, five and four? As a chair, I have the flexibility to do that, and I'm trying to think whether I really want to. Yeah, you can do it. So we'll hear case UDP L22003, item five, first?
Yep.
All right, and we'll move slowly, give Mr. Scheckman a little time to get back, but Mary, I'm going to stick with you, Kit. Any disclosures?
Oh, yes. Actually, they're the same as they were on what was really Number Three. I spoke with the applicant and I visited the site.
Shari?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
Spoke with applicant's attorney, did a site visit.
Site visit and voicemail.
Bill?
Counsel.
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
John?
Spoke with Nectaria and visited the site.
And we'll get... Well, here comes Mr. Scheckman, so we'll give it just a second. I have none. No disclosures for me. Jay, we're waiting anxiously to hear your disclosures, but I'm going to tell you, there's a reversal of fortune here. We're hearing item number five first. We're not hearing these together. We're hearing item number five, case number UDP L22003. Do you have any disclosures?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
All right, Ms. Nectaria.
Good evening. Nectaria Chalkis with the firm Lockery &amp; Chalkis, on behalf of Trinsec Residential Group. They are here in the audience. I have Chad Bradshaw and Jacob Schotmeyer, who can wave from the audience. They are under contract to purchase what is known as the parking lots in front of the Weston Cypress Creek Hotel. What we have in front of you, what I'm going to do is go through the map amendment that we're proposing, and then the next item will be the text amendment that we're proposing to the mixed-use category that we're proposing to go to. Okay. So this is the site. It's located on Cypress Creek Road. You've probably driven by it many, many times as you're on I-95, so you can see the Weston Hotel is located to the... Right almost in the middle of the property, along with... That's a 298-room hotel and has some accessory restaurant space and meeting space and retail space that are all associated with the hotel. But the parking for that hotel is all on this surface parking lot. It is very underutilized, and as a result, the Weston is looking to sell the property. Trinsec is under contract to purchase it, and what they're proposing to do is a mixed-use project. This area in general was once under the unincorporated Broward. It was annexed into the city, we believe, sometime in the late 80s or 90s, but at the time that it was annexed in, the land use category was brought into the city, but the zoning category was not. So this whole area north of Cypress Creek, where I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this entire area here is, except with the exception of one small parcel, is still under county zoning. You could see also, the site is very well situated with I-95, Cypress Creek to the south, Oakland Park, City of Oakland Park property is to the south of us. So on the other side of Cypress Creek Road is the North Andrews Neighborhood. We have been in communication with the City of Oakland Park, have had numerous telephone conferences. They're very much aware of what's going on, and they do not have an objection. The site is also situated in close proximity to the park-and-ride lot, which is where my cursor is, right here. So just right on the other side of the park-and-ride... I'm sorry, of I-95, you have the park-and-ride lot. And then, as you all are probably very well aware, the west side of I-95 is the city's uptown area, which is undergoing a nice transition into seeing some mixed-use projects, and we're trying to carry that along the east side as well with this project. Little closer up aerial of the site, you can see again the Weston Hotel. The total site area is 6.6 net acres and 6.8 gross acres, and gross acres is calculated to the center line of Cypress Creek. It does not include any of the I-95 interchange or the ramps. So we're before you this evening, the ULDR allows applicants to request land use plan amendments, and this is either a map amendment, or we can actually request to make a change to the text. And so what's before you this evening is both. We're requesting to change the text, which is the next item on the agenda, and we're also requesting to change the future land use map designation for the property. So this is how the future land use looks for this area. The areas in color are the areas that are within the City of Fort Lauderdale. The areas that are not in color are either City of Pompano Beach to the north of the water or the canal, and then to the south, you have Oakland, City of Oakland Park property. Again, on the left-hand side of I-95, you see the employment center land use category. That's an indication that that is a major employment center area for the city. In fact, this area is probably one of the biggest areas in terms of office uses and things like that, and commercial uses outside of the downtown. So that's why we call it uptown instead of downtown. The future land use category, right now, is residential medium-high, 25, which is 25 units an acre, which is very low compared, given the location, to mass transit and tri-rail station, I-95 corridor. And so what we're proposing to do in order to accommodate the hotel, which is existing and is going to remain, and the new mixed-use project that will take place on the parking lot, is to change this to the city's mixed-use land use category. The mixed-use land use category has been in the comprehensive plan, at least for two or three years, maybe longer. It has never been used. So this is the first time the city's actually been able to apply this to a specific parcel, and as we were doing that, we realized there's some things in the text of the category that either don't really make sense or wanted to fine-tune to make it a little bit more current and consistent with certain city zoning regulations and certain county designations. So we're, right now, going from... We're proposing to go from the residential medium-high 25 to mixed-use. We're also going to be processing a county land use plan amendment, because we're staying at the county. We're going to be processing that amendment to have the two districts or two land use categories match up as best as possible. The county doesn't have a mixed-use category, but we're going to a category that is as close as possible, and so that's why some of the tweaks are being requested on the next agenda item. This is how the zoning lays out. You can see these are categories that you probably don't recognize, with the exception of the B2 and CB. All the other categories that you see here, OP, S2, R1C, and R District, which is R6, those are county zoning designations. So under any circumstance, if something were to happen on this parcel, you would have to rezone this property, simply because the R6 zoning category doesn't even exist anymore at the county. So you look up in the code book today, there is no R6 zoning category. We actually had to go back and pull the 1977 Broward County Code to even get an idea of how that category was... What the requirements were of that category. So it's a very outdated situation that we have on our hands. This is a... Just really the conceptual plan. We are filing for a planned development district zoning category. This is a mixed-use project. It'll have ground floor retail. It'll have 340 residential units, 12 stories. This is the conceptual plan. It's going to have a lot of green space and public areas that are going to be dedicated to the city by easement for park purposes, a very walkable community, and we included this in the backup for purposes of providing you with a conceptual plan to show how we meet some of those design guidelines that are in the mixed-use land use category. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Jay?
How does the removal of parking from the Weston Hotel impact their compliance with parking?
So we are constructing, as part of the PDD rezoning, we're including the Weston Hotel. The parking garage, there's a parking garage proposed. It's a nine-story parking garage that will house the parking requirements for the hotel and for this new development. So it'll be one nice unified parking garage.
Those requirements, parking requirements for the uses, will mirror what city's code dictates would be needed?
So as part of the PDD rezoning, we're getting into more of the site plan issues, but I'm happy to address the questions. As part of the PDD rezoning, we can request an alternative parking ratio, which we're proposing to do, simply because the hotel right now has, I think, 300 spaces in that surface parking lot, somewhere around there, and they don't use them. They also have the ability to use... This is an office park, so they have the ability in their POA documents, the Property Owners Association for this area, to use parking areas, cross-parking with the office buildings, which are completely dead on the weekends and at night. So this area just has a lot of surface parking that's going unused.
Cool. Does anybody else have any questions of the applicant? At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Not releasing anybody in the gallery. I imagine it's going to be brief, if at all. Seeing no one coming forward, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Discussion? Questions? Motion?
Oh.
That's your cue, Mary.
Thank you. Yes, hold on, I have to find my cheat sheet.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that calls them that. I call them cheat sheets, too.
Which one am I going for, Shari, on the cheat sheet here? Okay, motion to recommend approval. I recommend approval of case number UDP L22003, and hereby find the text amendments are consistent.
I believe you were considering the map amendment.
Okay, well, the map.
The map amendment to mixed use.
Yes.
To change the land use designation.
To change the land use designation to mixed use. Sorry, I got a little confused there about what we were looking at.
Okay. All right, I'll second that. Case number? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranca?
Yes.
Ms. Spartik?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes, motion passes. All right, case UDP L22004. Mary, disclosures?
Yes, I spoke with the applicant's attorney and I visited the site.
Disclosure's not necessary on this particular item.
So I have none, thank you.
As much as I'd love to hear, it's not necessary.
Yeah.
Nectaria, we're going to turn it over to you.
Okay. All right, so this is the text amendment. So what I did was just to explain all of the changes, because it looks like a lot, but some things are being moved from one section to another and reworded and revised to make them consistent with the county. So I just...
So I just took exactly how it reads in your staff report and highlighted the areas so I can explain what's going on. So the red item is the addition of the intent and purpose of the mixed-use district. The item that has the blue next to it, that is the category, the density category, it's 50 units per gross acre. Under the previous version of the mixed use, or the current version of the mixed use, it allows 60 units per net acre. The county doesn't recognize that category, so when we're going to the county, we want to try to be consistent. So what we're doing is going from 60 units per net acre down to 50 units per gross acre. And that happens to also be consistent with your PDD ordinance, and also your mixed-use ordinance that you all have applied to a number of projects that come before you. The other, and the area in green, is the floor area ratio. It was previously, or is currently 2.5. We're proposing to increase that to 3.0, because 2.5 really is an extremely low FAR, especially when you're trying to get the density in these corridors. And so what we're proposing to do is increase it to 3, in order to line up with the city's PDD ordinance, which requires a maximum of 3.0 FAR. So again, we're aligning it with the PDD ordinance. And incidentally, I didn't mention this before, but the PDD ordinance is really the only zoning category that we can use for this land use category. So we want to make sure that they line up. And it'll stay that way until the city comes up with a different zoning category. The areas that we're striking through are previous categories that the city had. Again, they had, you know, very low-density categories that I don't think you would probably ever see anybody coming in here and requesting a mixed-use project with a 4.4 density cap. It's, that's a single-family, that's like even, that's the lowest single-family category. I'll put it into context. That's like down on Los Olas and, you know, some of those communities that have RS 4.4. It's a very low category. Same thing with the 8. And then the other categories, again, we just thought it was probably best to just go ahead and stick with the one category, which is the mixed-use 50 per gross acre. And then if somebody wants to come in and request something less, nothing's prohibiting them from doing that. The areas in orange are being deleted, or proposed to be deleted. Those are formulas for the mixed use, you know, how many, how much commercial you have to have relative to the residential. And aside from being a little confusing, these are things that we normally see in zoning categories, and not necessarily in the comprehensive plan. So we're proposing to go ahead and delete those. Again, you know, these were also required 10% of the floor area of the building to be in commercial. And I'll just put it in context, if we have a building that has 300,000 square feet of multifamily, which is very doable and very common, you would have to have 30,000 square feet of commercial uses within that. And that is not something we see. You have ground floor commercial usually, and then you have the residential on top. The area in blue, again, this is just making it consistent with the county category. And then the area in green is simply being relocated to the, relocated from another area of the mixed use. And then the rest of these provisions are either being relocated, or we're just being refined, or removing some redundancies. For instance, this provision that talks about compatible with surrounding land uses, that's already in the comp plan, doesn't need to be continuously restated in categories. So that concludes our presentation. Those are the text amendments that we're proposing to the city's mixed-use land use category.
Seeing, hearing none, we'll bear up public comment. Didn't see anybody sneak in since, well, I don't know, did something sneak in over there since the last item? You guys are running around like...
Yeah, a little visitor.
All right. Does he want to speak? We'll close the public comment section, bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll try this again.
Please do, Mary.
I move to recommend case number UDP-L22004, and find that the text amendment is consistent. Is that good?
Yes.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Patrick. Any further discussion before we vote? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Spartig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Rotella?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Chair Weyman?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Case numbers.
Thank you.
Item number six, case UDP-T22010. Ms. Gassman?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Dr. Nancy Gassman. I am the Assistant Public Works Director in charge of sustainability. Come before the board tonight for the second time on this item. The purpose for appearing tonight is that the Planning and Zoning Board acts as the local planning agency when there are changes to the Unified Land Development Regulation, specifically to make recommendations to the City Commission as to the consistency of a proposal or an amendment to the ULDR with the adopted comprehensive plan. As we discussed in the October Planning and Zoning Meeting, we are looking for a determination of consistency with the comprehensive plan for three sections of the ULDR related to boat slips and docks, a new section which would establish a resilient standards for tidal flood protection. The primary focus of the proposed ordinance is specifically to adopt a regionally consistent standard for the minimum top elevation of tidal barriers. And this is a requirement that is currently being mandated by Broward County, that all tidally influenced communities within Broward County adopt consistent standards with Chapter 39 of the Broward County Code of Ordinance. And that major change for that new regional standard is to change, to acquire a minimum seawall and top-of-bank elevation of five feet by the year 2050. In terms of our comp plan, there are three different sections that this ordinance either supports or is specifically addressed. In the future land use, the ordinance would support creating a more resilient neighborhood that can adapt to climate change and sea level rise by requiring higher sea level, seawall elevations. In addition, the coastal zone management, 4.2.3, also requires coordination with local partners to identify risks, vulnerabilities, and opportunities to address coastal hazards such as tidal impacts and impacts associated with sea level rise. And quite specifically, policy 2.2.3, in the climate change element, addresses this particular adoption of this change in our ordinance, that the city will adopt and update as necessary regionally consistent top elevation standards for seawalls, banks, and berms, as described by Broward County as tidal barriers. And these need to be consistent, again, with Chapter 39 of the Broward County Code of Ordinances. There's a great need for this ordinance, in that as we look across the last few years, you can see that the number of times that we are experiencing high tides that are exceeding the threshold for flooding in our community is significant. In recent years, we peaked out in 2019 with 170 high tides that exceeded the threshold for flooding. And seawalls is one of those ways that we can start to protect our communities from the impacts of these high tides. In the current year through November 15th, yesterday, we had 132 high tides that exceeded that threshold. When we consider the impacts of living in South Florida and the impacts that we have from various tropical storms, there are many ways to create a more resilient community. And one of those ways is to have higher seawalls. Over the last few weeks, all of us have experienced the impacts of Hurricane Nicole. And while this was not a significant rain or wind event, it did turn out to be a significant storm surge event. The purple line in this graphic shows you that while normally our predicted tide and our observed tides, the predicted tide is the blue line, the observed line is the red line, normally those two line up to some degree. But what we saw coming into the storm was that the oceanic level was already about eight inches above the predicted, the predicted height for tides. And then as the storm came in, we actually were almost two feet above the predicted tide, experiencing a tide almost as high as those as we've peaked out for in previous tidal storms over the last five years, in the range of 2.6 feet of tide. So the need for this ordinance accomplishes, by passing this ordinance, will accomplish a number of things. Will achieve compliance with the objectives and policies just discussed within our existing adopted comp plan. Will achieve compliance with the Broward County Comprehensive Plan, which is an important thing for us to do, because it impacts the ability to request land use amendments from the city to the Broward County Planning Council if we do not come into compliance. It adjusts our 2016 seawall ordinance to reflect sea level rise projections that the City Commission adopted in 2020. It supports reduction of tidal flooding, both the frequency, intensity, and duration of tidal flooding, by ensuring that new seawalls are built not just for today, but for the conditions of the future as sea level continues to rise. And in doing so, it contributes to improving community When I came to the board in October, we had already talked to the Marine Advisory Board twice. We had talked to the Rio Vista Homeowners Association and the Council of the Civic Associations. Part of the direction from this board was that there needed to be additional outreach to the community. Since our previous meeting, went before the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, their full membership meeting, at that meeting, we provided a full presentation, and an offer was made for any homeowners association for us to come and provide that presentation to the homeowners associations. No requests were received from any homeowners association resulting from that meeting. The Sustainability Advisory Board, which is the board that is tasked with reviewing issues related to sea level rise, was presented this ordinance in October 24th. They provided a communication to the commission supporting moving forward with the amendments. We are here before you today on November 16th. Tomorrow night, there will be a presentation to the Lauderdale Isles Civic Association, a request that came after our presentation to the Marine Advisory Board. And because of Hurricane Nicole, we were not able to get the vote from the Fort Lauderdale Civic Association, but that board will meet on the 28th to consider whether they would like to provide support for this amendment moving forward. To summarize our support, we already have a letter from the Rio Vista Civic Association, and again, this is in your backup, a letter from Broward County saying that we are in compliance with the requirements of their mandate, that our ordinance meets the, substantially meets compliance with their requirements of having this template ordinance. The Marine Advisory Board provided support in September. The Sustainability Advisory Board developed their communication on October 24th. We also have a letter of support from Tyler Chappell, representing the marine construction industry, stating that this ordinance is providing support for the work that they're seeing out in the construction industry, and the desire of the community to build higher seawalls. And as noted, there's a vote pending by the Civic Association Board. What we are looking for today is the local planning agency, part of your function, your concurrence, that this proposal is in fact consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, specifically with policy Climate Change 2.2.3, and recommending, making a recommendation to the City Commission to approve the proposed amendments to the three sections of the ULDR that are impacted, in order to come into compliance with Broward County's requirements.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Hearing, seeing none, open the public discussion. Hearing, seeing none, close public discussion, bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion. I move to find the proposed amendments consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, specifically policy CC 2-dash, 2-dot, 2-dot, 3, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
And recommending the City Commission approval of the proposed amendments of the city of Fort Lauderdale ULDR sections 47.19.3, 47-19.13, and 47-39.a.1b.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second. Steve.
Who was that?
I second Steve's second.
Thank you. Do we have a motion, second? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
No.
Ms. Spartig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
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 Mr. Rotella?
No.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Weyman?
No.
Four yeses and five nos.
Okay. All right. Moving on, do we have any communication to the city? Hearing, seeing none, is there anything for the good of the city?
Excuse me, Chair. Can I just go back to your request at the beginning, the main district? That's all. I believe it might need to be a communication to the City Commission if you want to have the board members all sit up there. Just as a precautionary measure, you might want to make that a communication, sorry.
I'm sorry, I could barely hear you, Jim.
You might want to, we already requested earlier to have all the board members sit up there. You might want to make a commission, communication to them, requesting that, because you'll be the first one.
Okay, so that's not something that's already in the planning. We have to twist their arm again. We got the plastic down, now we got to bring our brethren back up.
Yeah, I would make it a communication.
Somebody want to make that suggestion so we can vote on it?
Yes.
Brad, won't you?
I don't even know, I don't even know if we need to vote on it.
Make a motion.
I would just make the suggestion to the, to the city commissioners that all the chairs be placed back up on the podium, and how it was before the pandemic, that everyone would be sitting next to each other, so that there's not a separation in the individuals on the, on the diocese.
The only reason I would like a vote is because I think it would be a message to the City Commission if we had a unanimous vote of the members of the Planning and Zoning Board, that all like to sit up at the big boy table.
I think, I think you can probably, as Chairman, you probably say, if all in favor of that, I would imagine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Huh? So anything for the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale? All right, last item is voting on next year's calendar. I would imagine that everybody's had a chance to look at it. And so, do we really need to vote, or is this?
Yes, you do need to vote on the calendar that was given to you.
All right, so let's do it by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. Will be here every day on that calendar. Anything else? Happy Thanksgiving to all. Happy Thanksgiving to all. Gobble, gobble, we'll see you in December. See ya.